All right. I'd like to call the Clear Lake City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Thursday, October 12th, 2017. It is 6:00 PM.
Councilmember Overton here. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Bennett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Siqueg.
Here.
Mayor Firdoff.
Here. Would you please, whenever this guy here rises and join me in the middle of the leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the rule of law, the rule of justice. I am not interested in a debate about the legal principle of liberty and justice.
If you'd like to remain standing on the wall of Castle Vale and lead us in the other indication. I told you I was going to say that. If you want to step over and vote him where he had a microphone, sir. Dale Rogers, everyone.
That's great. Father, this is a trying time and we are in your hands. We thank you that you are there for us. We pray, Father, that you heal the places that need to be healed. Give us strength, Father. Thank you so much for that. We know all we have to do is ask you. You're there for us, every last one of us. Thank you for all the men and women that have fought so hard to save our community. We thank you for them. Father, I pray a special blessing with them. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you all very much. Mr. Coulson, if you have any changes to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask to add an emergency item to the beginning of the agenda as item number one.
Your presentation is through.
It'll be a business item, but it'll be item number one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adding an emergency item to the night's agenda as item number one.
Second. Have a motion of second by Councilman O'Hearis. All those who pick.
Aye.
Close. Motion can't be carried unless we. Any notes from Mr. Gill from the full section? There's no report of action. Mr. Coulson, who will be making the presentation?
Um, just want to say a couple of words. Um, and as you all know, on October 9th, we had a terrible new trend, a new fire that happened. Um, on that day, I did announce a local emergency. So one of the actions I'll be asking you to take on the night is to provide that declaration of emergency. Um, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Cal Fire, Lake County Fire Protection District, the Sheriff's Office, everybody up here, the county, all the first responders. There's just been so many people once again to this death that have saved in Clear Lake. Um, we almost lost Clear Lake Police Department of Clear Lake two years ago during the Rocky Fire. We almost lost the other half of Clear Lake during this fire. And I just want to thank you all for everything that you did to clear out the emergency.
Three seconds.
Three seconds. Right. Um, those were the most imminent taking us out. Uh, at this time, I'd like to introduce Steve Kaufman from Cal Fire to give a update on the fire situation.
And please, if you guys would like to come in and find a place up front, the civilian signboard, if you'd like. Crossley.
Can everybody hear me? My name is Steve Kaufman. I'm the PIO for Cal Fire Incident Management Team four. I am actually a engine company captain in Ventura County, California. And so I always start these meetings out, why is that relevant to you guys? So Cal Fire has six incident management teams. On any normal given day where we're not in a state of emergency and have seventeen fires going on in the state of California, one incident management team would have been assigned to either one of these fires independent on itself. But because there are so many fires in the state of California, like I said, seventeen major fires in the state of California, what we've had to do is break those teams up. And so each team is responsible for two or three fires all across the state of California. And so the way the team works is fifty people from all over the state of California come to a location and they help the location battle the fire and coordinate all the resources that are coming in. And so that's what we've done. And the reason I tell you that is because your firefighters before we got here are the ones that saved your homes. I want to make that very clear. Um, and our firefighters, the rest of the firefighters that came from the state of California, they assisted when they get, when they got here to save your homes. And so, uh, uh, the point I'm trying to make with that, as long as you see us here, even though you might not recognize the patch or the face or the hats or the fire engines, while we're here, we are your firefighters. And we're not going to leave until this is mitigated. So I want, I want you to be rest assured of that. Amen. Let me give you a couple of facts about the fire real quick. Uh, our acreage, and we've combined both of the fires, I'll break them down a little bit for you. Our acreage right now for total fires, both the Redwood Fire and the Sulphur Fire, is thirty-four thousand, six hundred acres. And we're calling it eight percent contained, um, for both of the fires. Let me break them down for you real quick. For the Redwood Fire, it's thirty-two thousand, one hundred acres, five percent contained. And for the Sulphur Fire, it's twenty-five hundred acres, fifty-five percent contained. Those are our most current numbers. So I'm going to step away from this. I'll talk as loud as I can. Can everybody hear me once I step away from it? Everybody in the back can hear me all right? So let me, uh, I'll go through the Redwood Fire because it's furthest from us. And then I'll close with the fire that's closest to you guys, um, so it's freshness in your mind. The Redwood Fire, all this red line around here is uncontrolled fire line. It means that we don't have good containment lines around it. But we have crews diligently right now working all this red line to try to wind that up. Our goal is to try to get really good line built around this fire prior to the wind event that's coming tomorrow. And I'll talk about that in a minute. All this black line here, we feel comfortable with that part of the fire. That's that five percent that I talked about. That's the part that we feel real comfortable, they built real good line in there. Um, without the wind, we don't feel that there's any fire that can cross that black line. That's what the black line signifies. So when we go down to the fire closest to here, the Sulphur Fire, there's a lot more black line around the Sulphur Fire, right? And so, uh, we still have fire crews building line in this red area all around this lower part of the fire. And they're going to continue to do that for the next couple of days. So let's, let's move forward to tomorrow. We're actually anticipating a significant wind event tomorrow. We're anticipating that winds are, the projections are that winds are going to be a little bit less than they were on Sunday and Monday, which is significant, right? Um, and so literally, all it's going to take is for one little tiny firebrand to get out of our fire line and then we're off to the races again. So the reason I tell you that, I'm not trying to be an alarmist, but I do want you to understand that we are still not out of danger. So the good news, the good news is that there might have been some rumors that we weren't getting any fire engines or resources. And I'm here to tell you, we are getting fire engines and resources. Not only are we getting fire engines and resources, we're getting them from all over the United States of America. We have firefighters coming from the state of Washington, Oregon, Nevada. I heard today earlier, North Carolina. We have firefighters from all over the state of California. I saw agents from San Diego, Los Angeles, up by the Oregon border. All over the state of California are coming here to help us with these fires. So I want you to be rest assured that our firefighters in the state of California are coming to help us. The other thing, I don't normally like speaking on behalf of other people. I do feel real comfortable about this one though. Um, our firefighters, when you see any of those firefighters out there, uh, they do not look at this as a job. This is truly for us, this is a passion or a calling. So when they come here, they are very serious about treating your neighborhood like their own neighborhoods. And so they're not going to leave until we've done our job and battled this fire until it's out. So let's talk about a couple of things. I really want to make sure that you guys get the most current information. There's a lot of false information out on the internet, on Facebook, on social media. So let's talk about, we are going to have meetings regularly so we can get that current information out. Let me give you a couple of things so you can get the most current information. Cal Fire has an app. So for those of you that have smartphones, if you go to the App Store, there's an app that's called Ready for Wildfire. I encourage you, it's free. I encourage you to download the Ready for Wildfire app. And then once you're in the app, there's a little spot on that that says incidents. If you click on that button that says incidents, you can actually see all the active fires in the state of California that are going on right now. And if you look at that right now, it literally scrolls down forever. There are a lot of fires right now. So the reason I tell you that is number one, so you know what's going on with the fire that's closest to you. Number two, if you have relatives that live somewhere else where there's one of these major wildfires, I want you to know what's going on with that. So if you look at that fire, you can actually look at what's going on with that specific fire, wherever it is in the state of California. You can also, if you have specific questions, uh, you can call the number to that fire because it's listed on that website in under that fire. And you can talk to somebody at the fire and they'll be able to help you and answer questions. Our goal really is to get as much information to you as possible. And I just remind you that we're literally only seventy-two hours into this whole fire thing. So we're still, this is still pretty fresh, but we're going to get you the most current information as fast as we can. When the fire's moving, it's super hard to get you exactly what's going on right now. Because our firefighters are out there fighting the fire. And then the other thing I want to point out is, we are here hand in hand with all your local firefighters and cooperators and sheriffs and police chiefs. We're all working together, that's how we do this. And so the reason that we're standing up here shoulder for shoulder is because that's how we fight this fire. We can't do it by ourselves. We do it with all the resources that are available. Let me make sure I talk about the red flag. Fire warning for tomorrow, um, please be so ever vigilant starting, you know, tomorrow morning. Those red flag fire warnings and the winds are supposed to come in tomorrow night. They're supposed to last twenty-four to thirty-six hours is what I heard. So be ever vigilant. If you see something, let us know. And, uh, that's all I have for right now. I'll come back up at the very end and I'll close it up. I'm going to, uh, pull up our, our team safety officer and he'll introduce himself and, uh, give you the presentation.
Good evening, my name is Doug Farrell. I am Cal Fire's Incident Management Team four's safety officer. And we take, um, as well as our own, we take your health and safety very seriously. We would like to put together a, we put together a safety message for you for when, I mean, when we start repopulating. There are many, many concerns when it comes to repopulating an area that there's been a wildfire. So we want to, this, you have suffered enough injury and loss in this neighborhood, in this community, that we don't, we want to reduce that to not having more. So we have provided you a safety message, you know, and I put these out to the right outside in the hallway. There's two documents. There's one that we put, the Team Four has provided to you. And it's, uh, and it provides basically like a step-by-step program when you approach going back into the community where your residents are, okay? And so, uh, read these before you go in after the, the restrictions have lifted, okay? And so read this, and then there's also a website at the very bottom, you can get more information from there. And then additionally, we have another document that is provided by Cal Fire and PG&E to checklist for returning home after a wildfire. And these are two great documents. Please read them, take advantage of those. If, um, there's not enough out there for anyone, please contact us. We will make sure we provide more to the community. And thank you for inviting us to help you. Thank you.
Regarding repopulation.
We're, we're going to take questions at the end, at outside. We're not going to do questions right now.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Emers and I'm one of the incident commanders that proudly serve on Cal Fire Incident Management Team four. And I want to say firstly that I'm humbled to, to be in this community and to be a member of Team Four to reinforce your local first responders, both law enforcement and your firefighters. Just like Mr. Kaufman said, we are here to assist them and to beat your fire department while we are here. Couple of things that I'd like to touch on, and Steve was very good at suing some of my points, but he left me a few. We are in a pattern of very dry conditions. Just to give you an idea, we're at day seventeen, and this is pretty critical for us, of humidities above the two thousand foot level or the humidities were below forty percent. With that being said, coupled with the Santa Ana winds that we had, is part of the reason why we have such quick, fast-moving fires within this community and the adjacent communities. Three-quarters of our state is currently in a red flag fire warning. I'm in my twenty-fifth fire season. I don't think I've ever seen three-quarters of the state in a red flag fire warning. I know personally because I've served in this community, in this valley before, on both the Clayton and the Valley fires, very devastating to this community. And you guys are still out there trying to recover from those. We make a commitment to you that we're here to serve you and we will not abandon this community until the job is done.
Good evening, my name is Brian Martin. I'm the sheriff of Lake County. Thank you all for being here. And I also want to take a moment to extend my thanks to these firefighters that are coming from out of the community. There's some familiar faces for me because as everybody knows, it's our third straight year of getting hit with devastating wildfires. Thank you guys for coming up. Thank you for coming back. We appreciate your help. Uh, we, as everybody knows, we are still very much in a dangerous state. The red flag warnings, the evacuation advisories that remain in effect for much of the county and the evacuation areas that still remain in effect for the city of Clear Lake. We're working very hard, we're working very diligently to get you home as soon as possible. And that time's going to come soon. We're going to have an announcement about that sometime this evening. What I want to remind everybody is safety. The safety brochures that are out there, heed that advice, read those. There are a lot of safety issues that may not be readily apparent to you when you return home. There might be trees that are ready to fall at a moment's notice without any warning. There might be hot ashes that you're not aware of. There might be trick hazards, smags, um, there's all nails, hazardous material, things that you can't see that may affect you down the road, um, that are dangerous for you today. Please be careful when we do open this up. The other thing that we need to be conscious of is, this is going to be very emotional for a lot of people when you, when you are able to return to your neighborhoods. You're going to see some destruction that many of you have never seen before. And I will tell you personally that it's going to take an impact on you, even if you're fortunate enough not to have lost your home, to see your neighbors and your friends and your relatives and, and join them in what they lost. Be mindful of that. Be mindful of that for yourselves. Be mindful of that for your friends. Those of you that are in the clergy, those of you that are in behavioral health and are able to provide counseling services, please be diligent, watching out for those things, and those too, that we not only make through this physically safe, but we make it through mentally safe and emotionally safe. Thank you all for the opportunity to serve this community. It's a privilege, it's an honor. And thank you for the amazing first responders and Cal Fire firefighters that we have.
Good evening, my name is Tim Sally. I'm the acting police chief for the city of Clear Lake, Clear Lake Police Department. I was here Sunday morning, Monday, Monday morning, actually, um, from a reception. I got a call, I responded immediately. And I got to tell you, our first responders are amazing. Um, our police officers, some of them were trapped by fire, um, some of our sheriff's deputies, some of our fire crews, they were immediately there and they did some outstanding work. We were able to call in some resources and I got to give up for Cal, Cal Fire. They've been amazing. They've worked with us diligently throughout this, as well as our local resources. And, uh, they've, they've been an amazing crew to work with. As everybody has said, we want to get you into your homes as, as soon as possible. We want to get you back to your belongings and that I get your lives back in order. This has been a devastating thing for all of, everybody involved, our whole community. And, uh, you know, my heart goes out to our community. The good news is that we anticipate to be able to lift the evacuation orders by five o'clock tomorrow evening so that we can get you in your, in your homes. That's what we anticipate. Um, I got to tell you, there's a lot of work that goes into getting you folks back into your, to your areas. We have worked very diligently and very hard. There's a lot of work that goes into it with the PG&E, the water crews, the fire departments. You'd be amazed, but I will tell you, you have an entire army working for you and getting you guys back to your lives as well. So, um, I, I just want to speak. Can everybody hear yourself? Um, this is far back down here. If, uh, if you live, if you live on the north edge past Oakmont, if you live in the county area as we lift this evacuation, where it is our suggestion that you travel north drive to that area to go around this area. We got a lot of fire crews and a lot of other crews working in the area and this will slow you down. So if you guys go to that route, we won't have that traffic congestion as we know, those roads are pretty tight in here.
Are you talking about Highway twenty to Sulphur Bank?
That, that would be a good route, yes. If you live in the county area, north of Oak in Oakmont, yes. If you live on this side, in the city side, then we suggest that you go through Lake Shore in that area.
I'm absolutely on it.
We'll, we'll take questions. The fire guys will have questions outside. I just want to let you guys know that that's the route that we recommend that you take as we, as we open this up. Be very careful, drive with due caution, please. We have crews working in the area. There's going to be some folks that want to get into their house, drive slow. Please obey all the, uh, the traffic laws and things like that. Amen. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ron Richardson and I'm the IC for PG&E for this event. I'm also the local superintendent for the Lake County Amendment Council and the Humboldt County electric side. Just wanted to give you guys an update on the damage that we have on Sulphur Fire. So right now, we're looking at about fifty-two poles with sixty-two spans of wire. Uh, we brought in over a hundred fifty PG personnel to assist with the event. And what we're trying to accomplish for tomorrow afternoon is we're trying to make sure we use everything energized just outside of fire range. I believe just Sunday afternoon, we're also expecting to build the energizing that fairly with Cal Fire's permission. Again, thank you for letting us see your community. Again, we're going to be here till the end of this fire and we'll be here after the fire also to help rebuild as we can. Thank you.
Evening, I'm Rob Brown with the Board of Supervisors. Normally I would say I'm District five, but the situation is like this. I don't feel there are any boundaries and I'm honored to be able to be here to work with my fellow board members and your city council to, as we begin a process of recovery and rebuild. Uh, it, it begins now, although you guys aren't let back in just yet. We're already working on efforts for cleanup and, um, your recovery in this area. We had Senator Wirestaff and Cal OES representatives yesterday out there and we were showing them the dynamics of what it is that we're dealing with as far as cleanup goes. And, um, they've assured us that we are a priority. They know that we're able to mobilize as they are as quickly as possible and we can get these cleanups done, especially along the lake and, and as we, as we move things or, uh, up the hill before the rains start. It's, it's, uh, to their benefit to allow us to do this as well because they need those crews in Sonoma County, Napa, but they're not ready like we are yet. So they assured us, and I know there's a bit of a lot of concern, um, from folks in here and social media that, that we're forgotten because we're not on the news and we're not, uh, in fact, I can assure you, we are not forgotten. They, um, we have a solid commitment from them. We've built some very incredible relationships with the state, federal partners, uh, to make this cleanup happen. We are not forgotten. Just because we're not on the Channel Two news doesn't mean that you guys are forgotten. We're, uh, not be able to do this stuff. It's going to be, it's going to happen. We're going to get done our crews, the county crews have been out there working alongside the city crews to try to identify, uh, damage. We've done assessments already, they're out there taking care of that. And we did those numbers together. We've, uh, we've put in letters of request for the cleanup that have been completed today. Those who go in, we'll have items on our board agenda to address some of the county, county concerns, but we're also sharing that information with the city manager as well. Uh, in issues with regards to things like price gouging, rent gouging, things like that, that are illegal. And we're going to remind folks that there are some serious penalties for that, a ten thousand dollar fine if you're in jail if that's, if that's determined. People are taking advantage of those that have suffered such a tremendous loss. So we're, uh, we're working on several things and we continue to do that. I know that they're going to take questions and answers, uh, question and answers, um, later on. Many of you will have questions that, um, that you can call me, but my phone number is three four nine two six two eight. And I'll be happy, all of our board members have, uh, have put out their cell numbers and I'll be happy to share the numbers with you, the number for your local supervisor as well. Because I, I can't stress enough how committed our board is to work with the city council and make sure that, that, um, your life will be normal, like you noted, it will be a new normal. But we're going to make sure that that happens as quickly as possible. Thank you.
We have that number, do we have that?
Yes, it's three four nine two six two eight. And actually, I'll ask Jim, can you give yours real quick?
Yeah, two nine five six one nine eight.
And then Jeff?
Two seven two three eight two nine.
Supervisor assignment?
Five three three nine six one five.
Sheriff Martin, his is still nine one one.
Good evening, I'm Keith Behr, but, uh, Golden State Water Company, I'm superintendent here locally. Um, I just want to give you guys a brief update on the water system, um, that most of you, I believe, are customers of. Um, we issued a boil water notice on Monday as a precautionary measure. Um, we collected samples, um, on Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, all samples have come back negative for any kind of bacteria, so the boil water system is lifted. And our infrastructure is solid, um, currently solid, and our water supply is also solid. So if there's any questions, call me, I'll be on site later.
Good evening, Mokes, District one supervisor. Like Rob said, there are no lines for this county, sort of the entire county. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about, um, the shelter that we had set up down in Twin Mine Casino. Um, tonight, I think we had about twelve people last night. Uh, some of the roads were open there. Um, I think we have a few folks that have lost their homes there, I think three or four. Uh, we've got to get them in the system and forgot what we're going to be doing as we move forward. As Rob said, recovery starts now. It is a longer process than you will expect. And be ready to really deal with those emotions when you go back into your community because they will affect you for a while. Please talk to somebody, social services and other places to really deal with that. Um, and I already talked from experience, today we are experiencing a little bit of that in the South County. We have some of the fires surrounding us on that end. Some of that stuff is really coming up. So what we'll do is work with the sheriff and also Cal Fire to get you out as much as information as possible as these things are happening, as you're going through. But, uh, we are a resource. You have my number, you can call. I want to be here to support Jeff Smith and the city council to help you guys get through this, you know, horrible time. But as you guys know, you've been through this over the past four years. We will recover, we will keep working at it, and we will get these things right the best we can. So, um, that's really what I have to say today. Been in contact with Jim Steele on a few different little projects we've been doing here. Um, you know, a lot of, you know, ranchery and some other things. Um, but I just want to let you know that, uh, as a supervisor, call me if you have a question. I will get it to the folks that needs to. And, um, please, help somebody. If you see someone crying, give them a hug upstairs. It goes a long ways. People are going to be sifting through ashes that they have their entire life and it's going to be something that is emotional for everyone. So this will bring us closer together, make us stronger, it'll make us a stronger county. I'll guarantee you that. So, thank you very much. I do love this camp, community, love everyone in it, and we'll get through this. So, thank you very much.
And for those that don't know me, I am your District two supervisor here. It's been my pleasure to serve you for nineteen years. This is a tough time, tough time for everybody. We, uh, as I told you the other night, it's, uh, very rare that you have four supervisors in this room that really want to do the job for you. Mokes, uh, District comes in the bottom of Clear Lake. I have the majority of Clear Lake. Jim's got the district right above touching the north part of Clear Lake. And Rob is fantastic as he is all the time. He, he knows the system upside down and backwards. He's, he's been our person that's dealt with every one of these fires. So, uh, we're all there for you. If you need something, don't hesitate to call us and ask. We'll get the answers. Again, my cell phone number, it's, it's always been on there. If you call my office, it's on the recording, we'll give you right off the bat. You, it's two seven two three eight two nine. Don't hesitate to ask for help. Don't hesitate to ask for help, we'll point you in the right direction, we'll all get through this together, and we just have a fresh start, that is what we have. So, thank you.
So you can see who I am, I'm Jim Steele, District Three supervisor, so anything that's in the unincorporated area is by a district. So call me 295-6198, 295-6198. And I am your supervisor, and I'm telling you that I will be your supervisor for every one of your issues that you can't get done somewhere else. But place to start will be with the local assistance center. And that will be established, the target date will be Monday. We're not sure of the target place yet. We're going to, yeah.
Great, we'll make that announcement.
Yeah, we don't have a specific date yet, but we're working on.
The target date has already been announced, so I can, I can still announce it.
It was announced by the sheriff. Just saying. See how we work here as a team, just want to know that this is not a Brown Act violation that we're in. So in any case, if you do have any questions, give me a call, and if I don't know the answer, I'll certainly find out if it's always fun here. And this board does work as a team. So, and any questions tonight, I'm going to hang around as long as I can. Thank you.
So that's all we have for you. I have one last thing as soon as City Manager Folsom talks about the next thing, and then we will be available outside directly following this meeting. We're not going anywhere. Come direct with any one of us with a question that we can't answer, we'll find somebody that can, and we'll answer questions as long as we need to in that outside area there.
So I want to give a couple other bits of information before the city council takes action. First of all, is everyone familiar with NIXLE? N-I-X-L-E. That is how you're going to be getting notifications from us as to when the roads open. So if you don't have it, I can teach you, can you explain how to activate NIXLE?
Yes. So if you, if you do not have NIXLE at this time, I'd like you to pull out your cellphone and on the two line, type 888-777. On the text line, the two, on the message line, I want you to type in Clearlake PD, one word, and then hit send, and then you should start getting alerts from us regarding these issues. You could also, if you have access to internet and computers, you can also go on there, I'm sure. And then you hit Clearlake PD, one word, and then hit send. Okay? Thank you.
We also have a wire outside, outside the chamber where it explains what happens to that, so in case you miss it. We also, on our website, we put a tab where you can get updates, so we'll be updating that on a regular basis. Also, as you exit, we put out information on its large size, it's a property casualty report, it will list the properties that have been damaged or destroyed, so that will be also available on our website. As Supervisor Steele mentioned, we will be opening hopefully next week a local assistance center. We will put out the NIXLE, so we get the details finalized on that. And please remember, there are still hazardous conditions out there, be very, very careful and vigilant and watch what you're doing out there. And now I want to bring that news to the campus.
So I actually, I'll, I'll end it, and then I'm going to bring up AmeriGas up here to talk about gas before you guys go back into your residence, because I think that's a vital piece. So right outside, once we go outside, like I said, we're going to all be outside available for questions. There's a map out there, we've been talking about a repopulation, letting folks back into their home at some point. If you look at the map, I think the next couple days, like the police chief said, is going to be very taxing. We're going to see things that we don't, hopefully we go through our life and don't have to see, but we're going to have to see some of those things tomorrow. It's a tough time. And so what we wanted to do is kind of get you prepared for this. We have a map outside that has some red dots where the damaged or destroyed structures are. So if you're not aware of what your property looks like right now, you'll have an idea if you're in that general area. And then if you refer to the reports that the city manager said they're going to make available outside, you'll be able to see what the outcome of your property is. So, and then as the police chief and the sheriff repopulate those communities, then you'll be able to go in and see those structures. I'm going to bring our, and then we'll answer all the questions outside. I'm going to bring you up to that last comment, and then we'll see you outside.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Garkstein, the district general manager of AmeriGas here locally, along with my operations supervisor, Tony Wyden. What we want to convey to you is that as you return to your homes, and some of those homes would not have been inside of that fire area, and you still may have some issues with propane, you might have turned off your propane before you left, your neighbor may have turned it off, fire department may have turned it off. If it is off, do not turn it on yourselves, please call your local supplier, whoever that fire is, and they will come out and do a safety check for you, make sure that system is safe for you to turn, to turn off. Do not attempt to light pilots yourself, leave that to the professionals. If you're inside that fire room, and your home was not touched by the fire, it was still there inside that area, have us come out, do that safety check for you. You never know when the line's been compromised, the tank's been compromised, let us check it out for you. We don't want another disaster on top of what we've had. So leave to us, we're here to help you. Our phone number is 263-5438. We have facilities around, all around the county. We've been here for all of you throughout the fires, we'll continue to be here for you. Your propane company will be here for you as well, just give them a call, be happy to help you with anything you need, it's propane related. And I'll be outside, Tony and I, Tony and I will be outside, take questions if you have any. That phone number again for AmeriGas is 263-5438. Just really quick as we come down, excuse me if they're not. I'd like to point out a couple of other codes that went right into the emergencies, I'm just going to count them right out of the book. Also, as you're going back home, should you find things that may have looked like microtubers or something like that, please report that to law enforcement to get that prepared. And I'd like to want to do one more thing, and give kudos to Supervisor Moakeson. Every fire that I've been aware of, they graciously opened up the facility and taking care of our people, and the town bill town has opened up their high school and taking care of our folks, and we ever did repay, we're here for you. Thank you so much for all you've done for us and our everybody that needs to do, and that's the price of staying. So, we will wrap up this item. If you have any questions for the fire staff, if you have a question with law enforcement or any others that presented, we will be meeting you outside, we need to continue our authority to do our business. If you have, if you have questions or comments for this item number that we're never going to be entering to, we'll have the podium set up, we're going to take about a two-minute break, we can set up once you guys get out cordially, and then we'll be completing the meeting. I'll be back.